Good morning. Welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It is Wednesday, March 25th, 2015. We are in the Senator hearing room here at Courthouse Square. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first item on the agenda is public comment. We do not have anyone signed up for public comment. So we will move to the consent calendar, and I don't know whose turn it is. Mr. Cameron's turn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we skipped me last week. Under Finance, approve proposed list of tax-foreclosed real property to be sold at public auction, and set the date and time for the public auction on April 30th, 2015, at 10:00 a.m. Under Health, approve Amendment Number Two with Project Able, Inc., to add $38,000 to the contract to provide trained peers to work as mentors for high-risk adult behavior clients. And under Public Works, approve a renewal agreement with Clean Harbors Environmental Services, Inc., for $1,200,000 for household hazardous waste services.
Assume that's the motion, and I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve those three consent items. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those are approved. Okay, we have just three items under action today, and then we have a public hearing noticed at 9:30 for supplemental budget. So the first item under action is to consider approval of a proclamation designating April 7th, 2015, as National Service Recognition Day in Marion County. And we have Marta Trinidad from the City of Woodburne who is here to present this proclamation to us. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Marta Trinidad with Marion County Retired and Senior Volunteer Program, which is hosted by the City of Woodburne. Just kind of want to share a few, just a few facts about...
Marta, could you pull the microphone real close to you? I'm not sure if it's working or not.
Can you hear me?
Oh, that's my...
There it is.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. You want me to repeat it, or are we good?
We're, I think we're fine.
Okay. So the Retired and Senior Volunteer Program within Marion County, we have one program. It does fall under the umbrella of Senior Corps, which is the federally funded program through, excuse me, the National Community in Service. And so CNCS is the one who actually hosts the whole program. Just a few statistics around here. We do have about 190 volunteers in Marion County, and there were about 18,105 hours that were served by our volunteers. And our volunteers are 55 and better, and we place them at some approved sites, which could be another government agency or nonprofit organization. If it is for profit, it has to be in the healthcare system. And so we have wonderful, wonderful individuals who love to give of their time, of course. We have, our largest group that volunteers is between 70 and 79 years old, making up about 49% of our total. And we have 20 stations within Marion County that the individuals serve at. And of course, the program has been hosted by the City of Woodburne since 1974, and was one of the very first ones to come onboard as one of the programs. That's pretty much it. Is there any questions or that you have for me?
That's great. I've always wanted to know a little bit more about that program. I've seen the materials about it and know that it's going on, so. And what a great place to have it in Woodburne, because you have many retired people that live in Woodburne, so you can tap that population.
We do.
So that's really great.
Yes, ma'am, we do.
If I could, maybe, I see the programs, like just an individual service that might be performed. You've talked in groups and stuff, but like what?
So we have, our largest number that serve is at Aware Food Bank, and also the Marion Polk Food Share.
Okay.
And so they, they definitely come in and they put boxes of food together. They have, individuals are bilingual, so they sign them up, and then they're able to receive their boxes. I believe most of them do the 30-day request. But they, they serve well over 2,000 families alone in just one month. That doesn't include, you know, the yearly count. The other one is the Meals on Wheels. That's the other larger group as well. They serve well over 3,000 individuals, and not just, again, not just in the Woodburne area, but also in Marion County altogether. And they prepare the food, and they go and deliver, including the weekend meals. So they're everywhere, including the schools. We have the SMART program, and we're, actually, it's the children who read to the adults. And so it expands their vocabulary and their understanding of what they're reading. So it's, it's very well spread out, so.
All right. Madam Chair, if I could, I'd make a motion that we do approve a proclamation that proclaims April 7th, 2015, as National Service Recognition Day in Marion County.
I'll second the motion. Do we want to read the proclamation?
Well, we will after we vote on it. So we have a motion and a second. Did you have any comments or questions that you wanted to make?
No, it's good.
All right, so I just wanted to add a few things. We have some information in our notebooks about this day of recognition, April 7th, 2015. And Marta, thank you for bringing that forward. After you brought it forward, I actually was contacted by Brenda Brooks from the Oregon Youth Development Division of the Oregon Department of Education, asking if we would do a proclamation. And then Kim said, "Well, we already have one." And so we compared them, and they were very similar. So this is both a county day of recognition and a mayor's day of recognition for national service. And it says that county governments have a broad range of responsibility for their citizens, and it matches this organization's mission to improve lives, strengthen communities, and foster civic engagement. And I did contact Kathy Crocker, who oversees Marion County's volunteer program, and we have hundreds of volunteers that work. We actually have one that we're going to appoint here today that, that help us in Marion County. And we have another board session that we do where Kathy presents a report and adds up all the hours and talks about all of the great work that people have done around Marion County. She is not here this week. She's out for spring break, but we'll be doing that another time. But it does talk about AmeriCorps and Senior Corps, Foster Grandparents, which we've heard about, this RSVP program. So there are a lot of different programs that are done for national service as well. And then it talks about the goals of the day are to highlight how local government leaders and communities use national service to solve challenges, to thank the national service members for their commitment and impact, to build public awareness about the value and impact of national service to Oregon cities and counties, to provide opportunities for elected leaders to communicate about the impact of national service to national policymakers, and to generate press coverage and online discussion about local government's support for service as a strategy for strengthening communities. And then it does talk about getting involved, that we can register our community's support on their website, which Jolene Kelly has already done for us, and issue a proclamation, which we are doing right now. And then it talks about using Twitter and Facebook and some other things to, to get the word out. So this is our opportunity to recognize this day, and also to recognize the importance of service in, in doing great public purposes, which Marta has done. So are there any other questions, comments? All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And it is approved. And then we have a ceremonial one that Commissioner Brentano is signing right now that we will, we're going to provide a copy to Marta, correct? Just one copy, all right? Kim says just one. All right. You don't get two, you only get one. Let me take my glasses off so I can see the line here. Okay, so while we are signing that, Commissioner Brentano, you want to start with reading the proclamation?
Certainly. In the matter of proclaiming April 7th, 2015, as National Service Recognition Day in Marion County, a proclamation, whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's counties are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet county needs, and whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our community from educating students for the job of the, jobs of the 21st century, supporting veterans and military families, to providing health services, and helping communities recover from natural disasters, and...
And whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities, and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities to those who serve, and whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants serve in more than 60,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being area, and whereas national service participants increase the impact of organizations they serve, both through their direct service and by managing millions of additional volunteers, and whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars, and...
Whereas national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors, and whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with county executives nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National Association of Counties and county executives across the country for the County Day of Recognition for National Service on April 7th, 2015. Now therefore, the Marion County Board of Commissioners declares April 7th, 2015, as National Service Recognition Day in Marion County, and encourages residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our country, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities. And it's dated this 25th day of March, 2015. Marta, we will give you this copy, this one copy that you gave.
Thank you very much.
So now we will move to our second item, which is consider approval of the Revised Economic Development Advisory Board bylaws. And we have Sarah Cavassos, and I was just thinking, it's a little ironic, because your career at Marion County actually started with some national service, didn't it?
It sure did.
Right. And now look at you. I mean, see?
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Sarah Cavassos. I am Management Analyst with Marion County Community Services Department, and I am bringing forward for approval today the bylaws for the Economic Development Advisory Board. These came forward to the Commissioners in a work session on March 16th, and we reviewed a handful of revisions to the bylaws to address some discrepancies between bylaws and former charter. So as we discussed in that meeting, these revisions address the number of appointments to the Economic Development, or Economic Development Advisory Board, as well as representation throughout the county of businesses and geographic preferences, and then how our meetings will be structured and operating. Is there any questions about the revisions that you guys might have?
Want to make some comments?
Well, I want to thank you, Sarah, for the time you've put in, and I want to, I guess, gathering the soldiers together to make sure that we got this. It's been a little bit of an uphill battle, but all your good work, thank you, and I think it'll help us have some focus in the future. So it's a good job.
So what are the key changes, Sarah, that are in the bylaws from what they were before? Just a couple areas that you spent some time cleaning up and trying to reconcile all of these documents that you looked at.
So the key changes were some discrepancies between the former charter that listed the number of membership at 14, and bylaws that had it at 19. So these bylaws will keep the 19 membership and redact any prior charter or bylaws, so that this will be the only standing document governing this board. And then it also brings and incorporates charter representation of specific industries into the bylaws, as well as the geographic representation. I think that those were the key changes. We also addressed ex officio. There had been some discrepancies between if ex officio members were voting or not voting, so we looked at other practices within the county to determine if they should or should not be voting members. So we specified that in there to give them voting authority as well. We also added a attendance requirement, so that we would ensure full engagement by advisory board members, and so we set that at, I think, 65% required attendance, so that we have better engagement moving forward.
And then I think these, do these bylaws make a county commissioner a member of the group as well?
They're an ex officio.
Ex officio, right.
Which they were in the charter as well.
Okay.
So the difference in these ones is that all ex officio members do have voting authority.
Okay. Very good.
So it makes me official.
That does. That's what I was thinking. You are actually official now. Officio.
Officio.
So another question that I have for Gloria is, so by approving these bylaws, these would then supersede any bylaws that we did in the past, but we had a charter before that I think might have been approved by board order. At some point, do we need to, we're talking about redacting the charter, or just saying that it doesn't prevail anymore? Is there anything we need to do other than just approve these bylaws today? Can we do it by motion, or how does that work?
You could incorporate it in your motion. It's been clearly described that the intent is to supersede any previous charter, any previous bylaws regarding that.
Okay, very good. So item number 14 of the bylaws specify that as well. It lists the bylaw and charter, so that it would...
Ah, there you go.
Clearly remove that.
Any previously adopted bylaws or charter for the EDAB. Got it. All right.
Madam Chair, the other, the other thing I think is important is number 15 on here, because we continually get asked by people, "Can I be on the board? Can I be on the board?" Or, "How do you get there?" And I tell people all the time, "You are welcome to come to every board meeting as a community member, and give us your input, and participate." Just, they wouldn't necessarily have a vote, but we want to, we want to encourage that type of participation, especially from people who have an interest in seeing our economic development move forward.
Very good. So would you like to make a motion to approve this process?
Sure. Madam Chair, I'll move that we consider approval of the Revised Economic Development Advisory Board bylaws, with a special note paying attention to item number 14, that this would supersede any prior bylaws or charter for the EDAB board.
I'll second, and just make one comment. I support it because I, it kind of is a culmination or continuation of the work Commissioner Cameron's doing to make this EDAB a more flexible, viable, effective group in Marion County. I hope it accomplishes that.
All right, very good. So we have a motion and a second to approve the revised bylaws. Any further discussion?
Just to follow up on Commissioner Brentano's comments, is thank you to staff, to Tammy and Tamara and Sarah, because it's really been a breath of fresh air to have great support and, and a lot of great works being done behind the scenes, so thank you.
Yes, I think we do need to comment that this has been so wonderful, and I know it's been a big job for you to jump in and take over this whole new area, but you're doing a wonderful job. And I think the other part is that we're going in a good direction, and there's certainly been some back and forth around the board end about the, you know, where EDAB has been, and, you know, kind of the perspective of the members, and where it fits within Marion County. And I think that, that this direction that you're going is going to help ease that and take us all where we can be on the same page, so I think that's real important.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so we haven't voted yet, right? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the bylaws are approved. Didn't think you'd have that much discussion about bylaws, did you? All right, so let's move to item number three, consider an order of appointing Bill. And Bill, how do you say your last name?
Burish.
Burish. Okay, I see you all the time at State and Breakfast, but I don't know if I've ever heard you say your last name, where I've listened carefully. To the Marion County Economic Development Advisory Board for a term ending June 30th, 2018. And Sarah, you've got this one as well.
Yes, so today, to keep you apprised of changes in membership, we also want to acknowledge that Doug Rux has submitted a resignation. He was our City of Salem representative. He took employment in Newburgh and has moved on. So that position has been vacated. And then we have Bill Burish here with NORPAC, who is going to be serving as a representative on the board, representing manufacturing and distribution. So I'm going to let him introduce himself and tell a little bit about his interest in the board.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Bill Burish. Thank you very much for the opportunity to visit with you this morning. Give a little bit of my background. I've lived in the Salem community for 14 years, and all of that time in the, in the South Salem area. My employer is NORPAC Foods, and I've been with them for 12 years. All of that time has been in the operations and manufacturing area. I'm currently Vice President of Operations. I've been involved in some of the major projects going on as project leader of the corporate office expansion project, along with a co-leader with our alliance partner, Henningson Cold Storage, with that distribution center on Madrona Avenue. As far as what I consider to have as skills that could be attributable to the, to the board here, is of course, project management skills. I have good organizational and attention-to-detail-type skills. I have good communication skills. I work well with others as far as a team member. As far as if I were appointed to the board, I would have interest in continuing to remove any roadblocks that other companies or businesses or employers might have in terms of looking for growth or expansion, and continue to assist and support and provide resources for those entities as appropriate.
Well, we're really thrilled that you're willing to step forward and be on the Economic Development Advisory Board. You've heard our bit of a discussion that we had just previous to this, and we're making a lot of changes, and you're part of that change. We're expanding the membership so that we have a broader perspective from all around the county of how things work, and how we, as a county, can play a role in promoting economic development. So we're just really glad that you've agreed to do this.
Sure. I would, I would appreciate being part of the group.
I may say this just wrong, but I've known Bill for some time, but I always think of him as a representative of agriculture, but when you listen to him talk, there is a trade sector, manufacturing aspect that I didn't really picture into things. So I think he'll offer a lot to the group.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Bill, for doing this. I know we, we are making some changes, and your expertise, and especially your most recent experience in the process that you went through, as a company who made a substantial investment in our community. It'll be great to have that ability to bring that and, and share with us, because it's not always evident to us, the struggles that, you know, a company goes through to make that happen, and maybe we can use your talents to help remove some of those roadblocks. The one thing you did comment was getting along with a bunch of other people. Wait till you get with this EDAB board, and you're going to have fun.
Play well with others.
It'll be good.
Yeah. Well, we had a very positive experience with the local authorities in our projects, so I'm, I'm just hoping that we can provide those opportunities for, for other people in the future.
One of the things that we have been talking about as a board, and that this change is brought forward, is the importance of infrastructure and the role that government can play in that. And I'm also living in South Salem and going down Madrona frequently. I know that there was the intersection and the widening of the street and the sidewalks and things like that that went on in order to accommodate the additional traffic, and then the proximity that you have to freeway and other transportation. I'm sure that those are things that are, that were important to NORPAC in going through that.
Yes.
That's the type of discussion that we want to have.
Madam Chair, if I could, then I'd make a motion that we approve an order appointing Bill Burish to the Marion County Economic Development Advisory Board for a term ending June 30th, 2018.
I'll second the motion.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the order. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You're approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down today, too. That's very nice. All right, so we have about four minutes until 9:30, when we can start our public hearing, so want to take a short break? I think we already are taking a short break, so. So we'll recess for, until 9:30.
Oh, I wanted to tell you.
The word reconvening. So we will reconvene this regular Wednesday board session of the Marion County Board of Commissioners. It's Wednesday, March 25th, 2015. We are still in the Senator hearing room at Courthouse Square, and we will open a public hearing. It's just after 9:30 a.m., and this will be under Finance. It's a public hearing to consider adopting the third supplemental budget for fiscal year 2014-15. And we have Jeff White and Rich Miniker. So good morning.
Good morning. Morning, Commissioners. Yes, as stated, I'm Rich Miniker from the Finance Department, and I'm here to present the third supplemental budget request for the Marion County Fiscal Year 2014-15 budget. Oregon revised statutes require that increases to appropriation authority from the original adopted budget must be adopted by the governing body. In addition, any changes to the original adopted budget for expenditures that exceed 10% for each fund must be published in a local newspaper, and a public hearing must be held to allow for public input on the proposed change to the budget. Public notice of this supplemental budget was published in the Statesman Journal newspaper in accordance with statutory requirements. Details of the third supplemental budget were reviewed with the Board of Commissioners at Management Update on March 16th. This third supplemental budget for fiscal year 1415, it decreases the total budget This supplemental has primarily minor budget increases and two major budget decreases. I will discuss highlights of the supplemental budget. I will state all amounts to the nearest thousand dollars. The general fund total budget will increase $9,000, which is the net of changes in two departments and the non-departmental part of the fund. The Community Services Department budget will receive an additional $34,000 in general fund transfers. This is allocated to materials and services, cover $28,000 for an OSU extension, services, rental lease at a new location, and $6,000 for other supporting costs. The Sheriff's Office general fund budget will increase 40, decrease $46,000. Other revenues will increase $3,000 from recycling brass bullet casings, with this revenue allocated to materials and services and supplies for replacement ammunition purchases. General fund transfers will decrease $49,000. This is achieved through a like decrease in materials and services and rentals for fleet leases due to reduction in charges. Reduction in general fund transfers will free up funds that can be utilized in the general fund non-departmental budget to transfer $44,000 funds to the fleet management fund. General fund non-departmental budget will increase $21,000. $16,000 the result of reduction in transfers to general fund departments, and $5,000 is from, a transfer from the Children and Families Fund for the purpose of reallocation to the Community Services Department general fund. Contendency is reduced $79,000. These funds, along with the additional revenue totaled $100,000, which is allocated to transfers out, $44,000 to the fleet management fund for a pickup truck for sheriff patrol services, $40,000 to the capital improvement projects fund for a juvenile detention center interior wall painting project, $15,000 to the juvenile grants fund for contracted services for technical assistance to develop a model for intensive in-home services for youth and juvenile justice system, and $1,000 to the non-departmental grant funds to balance and close out the striking out meth project. and close out the striking out meth project. The Capital Improvements Project Fund budget will increase $42,000 from transfers in from the general fund, $40,000, and the Public Works Fund, $2,000. The $40,000 is allocated to a project of the Juvenile Detention Center for interior painting. $2,000 is allocated to Sheriff's Office Repeater Station Channel 3 Improvement Project. The Children and Families Fund budget will increase $36,000. The increase is made up of an additional $12,000 in Intergovernmental State Health Families Program Grants Fund and $24,000 increase in other revenues donations. The state funds are allocated to Personnel Services to cover portions of two-staff salaries. The donation funds are allocated in Materials and Services for contracted services for community resource database system work, $10,000, and miscellaneous meetings, $1,000, and special programs for reentry client needs and services, $13,000. The Facility Renovation Fund budget will increase $5 million in financing proceeds revenue, as further financing for projects is not needed at this time. Capital outlay is reduced $9,495,000, as this funding is not required for current year expenditure plans. Ending fund balance is increased by $4,495,000 and will be carried forward to next fiscal year to continue major projects. The Fleet Management Fund budget will increase $44,000 from a general fund transfer, and the funds are allocated to capital outlay to purchase a truck for the Sheriff's Office Forest Patrol. In addition, contingency is reduced by $7,500, and the funds are reallocated to capital outlay for outfitting costs of the Public Works Flagger Truck. The Health Fund budget will decrease $3,345,000. This is almost entirely due to a decrease in intergovernmental local revenue from the Mid Valley Behavioral Care Network, or BCN. Management and oversight of the mental health outpatient provider panel contracts have been transferred from the Health Department to the BCN. Therefore, there is a like decrease in Materials and Services contracted services. The Public Works Fund budget will increase $28,000 with receipt of intergovernmental federal revenue for a homeland security grant. Funds will be allocated to Materials and Services Supplies, $19,000 for field supplies and materials, $6,000 for computer software-related. In addition, there are major shifts between categories. Contingency is reduced $195,000. Materials and Services contracted services is increased $100,000 for thermoplastic striping. This is a reclassification from capital outlay as a type of expense. One capital item is reduced, $100,000. This is a thermoplastic striping that's moved to M&amp;S. Other capital outlays are increased, $194,000. One, $150,000 for two additional air conditioning units in Building One on the Public Works Campus. Two, $14,000 is for an emergency management rapid deployment truck. Three, $17,000 is for an air compressor for the striping truck. Four, $13,000 is for additional outfitting of a dump trailer and a dump truck. This concludes my highlights. Are there any questions?
Questions? There we go. Any questions? Have any questions?
No.
Really? So, we did go through this at a Management Update meeting a couple weeks ago, and looked at it quite closely and asked a lot of questions. So, if we're not asking a lot of questions now, it's because they've been asked before. As was mentioned, this is the opportunity for the county to kind of adjust and align right size or whatever the budget to fit the changing expenditures that are happening, whether it's grants or new conditions that have happened in the county. In one instance, I think it's a capital outlay project that just won't happen soon, so we're gonna move the money and so that we don't have our budget artificially inflated with money that we were thinking we were gonna borrow this fiscal year, and we're not gonna borrow it till later. There were a few things in here that I noted as we went through that are noteworthy in kind of the world that I live in all the time. One is the move of $3.4 million, a little more than that, from the Health Department to the Behavioral Care Network. That is, that represents a fairly significant shift in doing business at the Health Department for, I'm thinking, since the late 1990s, when the Behavioral Care Network was formed, Marion County was responsible for mental health and substance abuse services in Marion County, and Polk County was responsible for the services in their county. And now with the advent of coordinated care organizations, there's a real push from that organization and from the state to provide access, so no matter where someone lives in the region, they can get services. And to do that, the understanding was that then the Behavioral Care Network would manage the contracts and make sure that there was access for everyone. So, while it is a shift in dollars, it's also a shift, I think, in some of our staff, who are Marion County employees, interestingly enough, that work at the Behavioral Care Network, and it will be a difference, because there were a lot of responsibilities that we had at the county level in terms of selection of the providers, quality control, that kind of thing that are shifted as well. So, all of these budget numbers, while they sound a bit routine, I guess, in the supplemental budget, there are some major changes that are going on in Marion County, and in some instances, not really major, but some significant changes that are important here. Two others that were interesting to me, one is the $15,000 that's being provided to the Juvenile Department for the intensive in-home services, and that is connected to a grant application that Marion and Multnomah Counties submitted to Third Sector Capital, and we're just notified that we were one of, and I can't remember, it was seven, eight, something like that, locations in the nation to be selected, and so that money is cash matched for that grant. And Gloria was in a meeting with me yesterday, where we're starting to labor over the agreement that we're gonna have with that organization. And then I noticed in the Community Services Department that there is an increase for them to accept the monies that we raised at the annual giving people a Second Chance Breakfast for reentry. So, those dollars, instead of going, they have been going for, the six years that we've had the breakfast, they've been going to Landmark Professional Mortgage Foundation. Dave Hafner has very graciously collected those dollars for us and allowed people then to have a charitable write-off of those contributions, and charged us nothing for doing that, and then provided tax statements at the end of each year. I mean, he's just been great. But with Community Services, kind of like Economic Development, Community Services is now also doing staff work on reentry, and they felt it would be probably a bit easier for them to just manage the monies in-house. People still get the tax write-off when they donate it to the reentry initiative. If it's in a governmental entity, it's a charitable contribution, and so they got the authority to be able to collect almost $15,000 worth of contributions that we raised in one morning back last October. So, numbers can be interesting.
Good.
Sure could be.
Right.
Madam Chair, did I just hear you say that on April 15th, I'm gonna make a charitable contribution?
To the Internal Revenue Service, you are, yes.
Oh, okay.
We all are.
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing and consider approval of a resolution to adopt a third supplemental budget for fiscal year 2014-15.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing and to adopt the third supplemental budget by resolution, and also want to thank Rich and Jeff for their hard work in keeping the numbers straight and making sure that we get the awards that we get every year for our great budgeting and financial systems. So, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And it's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
So, that concludes our business today for our regular Wednesday board session. I'll go ahead and read the Wednesday to Wednesday calendar. Let's see where we are. Oh, okay, well, we don't have anything till Monday. That surprised me. So, we're just concluding our board session on Wednesday, March 25th. Monday, March 30th, at 8:30 is our Board of Commissioners' Calendar Review. That will be in the Silverton Conference Room here at Courthouse Square, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem, and the Silverton Conference Room is on the fifth floor. Management Update will follow at 9 o'clock, same place, and at 2 o'clock in the afternoon on Monday, the 30th, will be a work session on finance and public contract rules review, also in the Silverton Conference Room. Tuesday, March 31st, at 9, is what we call a one-on-one department head elected official meeting, but we actually acknowledge it's usually about one on five. They have the three Commissioners and John Latimer and Jan Fritz who come in, and the one elected official or department head, to report to us kind of what they're seeing in terms of trends, things that we'll be seeing as the budget comes forward, any barriers, customer service issues, those types of things. So, this one's with Tom Rolffing at 9:00 in the Silverton Conference Room, and then we have another one at 10:30 with Tom Frye. Tom Rolffing's the assessor. Tom Frye is our Information Technology Department Director. Then at 1:30, we have a one-on-one with Alan Haley, our Public Works Director, and at 3 o'clock with Tam Regatch, who is our Community Services Department Director. Then next Wednesday, April 1st, April Fool's Day, but we're not fooling, right? We're having a board session, regular Wednesday board session, at 9:00 a.m. here in the Senator Hearing Room, and that will be followed by the Woodburn Marion County Luncheon Meeting up in Woodburn at Luises Taqueria, 523 Front Street. That's at noon. And then at 3:30 on April 1st, we have a prep meeting for the April 7th Distress Communities Workshop, and that will be held in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor here at Courthouse Square. Do you want to mention anything about that April 7th meeting? Kind of what's happening there?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. We've been working on this for quite a while now. I think we set the date about three months ago, two or three months ago. It's going to be probably a step towards having some action plans to help the distressed communities in the San Yum Canyon, the cities of Gates, Mill City, Detroit, Idana, with some of their infrastructure projects, and we've invited their leaders. In fact, Sarah and I, tomorrow, is Thursday tomorrow? Tomorrow, are meeting with the leaders in three of those cities to just identify, make sure we're on the same page of what those projects would be, and then we'll have federal and state and local resources available on the 7th to really brainstorm and talk about some of the funding and resources that are available to help these communities move forward. And as I continue to say, it'll be great to have a W.I.N. on the board in a year or two from now, and whether it's a water project, or a sewer project, or some project that these communities so desperately need, it'll be really, really great to see that happen. And I think that's where us, as a county, I really appreciate your support, Madam Chair, and Commissioner Brentano's, to put some emphasis and some focus up there, because those people have really, not a lot. So, thank you.
Thank you. Well, we were, I met with Gloria and Alan Haley, this was a few days ago, maybe it was last week, late?
Friday.
Friday, right, to get a little bit more detail on how you create a district and what the operations or implementation of that might look like for the county. And Alan Haley was talking about how they had basically all the funding package together, you know, and it was then that loan that they got for the $1 to $2 million that turned it, and I was lamenting, boy, you know, if we had had the impetus then that we have now, that we could've stepped forward when they already had the money. But then I thought, well, then we had Courthouse Square, and then the economy went down, so maybe it was a blessing in disguise that we were, you know, that that got derailed at the time that it did, because now we're actually positioned a lot better with the economy improving, and we're past Courthouse Square. I mean, who would've known at the time that that happened, that, you know, Courthouse Square would've happened? So, I'm really looking forward to the discussion. I think I'm more looking forward to the sitting down and rolling up our sleeves and figuring out than how we actually do step one, step two, step three, to, you know, to get the money and get the boots on the ground in terms of how we structure it and getting the agreements in place that we will likely need to get in order to move it forward.
Yeah, the only thing else I would add is the business community. Saturday, I was up there with the undersheriff and Commander Eric, I'm trying to think of his name.
Vlad.
Yeah, Vlad, and talking about their public safety needs, and the business community up there was really stressing the fact that the lake is usable right now, and with this rain, the lake's gonna come up, and so, you know, we just don't need another whammy to hit us, you know, with people thinking, well. They were talking even about people who are, you know, reserving boat slips at the lake are saying, well, I'm gonna send in 100 and see what happens, but we're pretty confident. And there's another meeting on April 15th, the Federal Lakes Meeting up there that staff is gonna attend, because I won't be able to, but at that point in time, we'll get an update from the Army Corps on the prediction of the lake, so we'll find out a little bit about that.
Very good.
I don't have too much to add, Kevin, but I don't know if you ever know that sometimes the Army Corps has been much better to work with lately than when I, like, when I first came up. It seemed like they just followed a formula that said, like, on March 1st, it's at this level. Well, seems like in the last several years, they're looking out the window and saying, oh, this isn't normal, and let's do what we need to do to capture water, and it sounds like they're doing that again, so certainly applaud that.
They do. They have a tough balance, because they have all these different pressures coming from different groups, and so, for example, the lake went up in February, but they couldn't hold it because of a red line issue with flooding, and if there was a flood, they'd be held liable for that. So, they have a difficult thing, you know, balancing the fish and the irrigation and the recreation and the flood control. So, the more I get into it, the more I try to understand it, the more I realize it's extremely complicated.
It's probably an art managing that, trying to figure out what it's doing, but I'm hoping they're saving every gallon they can.
But I will say this, last year, when I listened to them give a presentation, they said, well, over the weekend, they had all this change in rain, and they couldn't make a change in their schedule until Monday? And I'm thinking, don't they have somebody who can dial, you know, a computer or something over the weekend? Which kind of got me, my eyes wide open, that the Army Corps doesn't really move on a weekend.
I might be wrong. That could be, but there was also, they were repairing, I don't even know if it's done yet, the gates there at the dam.
The lower dam, Big Cliff. I think Big Cliff, they're still working on some of it, but I think the gates are operational.
So, that takes some tools away, I'm sure, when they can't quite put it where they want.
So, April 7th will be interesting, then, and it will be the beginning of a whole lot more, probably.
And I'm glad, I'm really glad to hear you're working on planning it out and stuff. I don't want that we all get there, just look at each other and say, oh, yeah, we want something.
No, and Tamara's gonna facilitate, so we'll have somebody that facilitates. The only unknown is if our federal delegation, if we know Congressman Trader's out of town, he won't be able to be there, but we've invited both senators. If they show up, we're gonna try to slide them in for five minutes, but the rest of it will be very well organized and scripted out, and people have a certain amount of time to talk, and as Commissioner said, hopefully there will be a plan, there'll be some plans to, action steps from there to go forward. Not just a discussion of all the problems.
Yeah, we know those.
We know what they are.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order? All right, then we are adjourned.